...meeting of Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury for Thursday, October 6, 2016. We'll have the invocation by Ms. Trimmie, and I'll do the pledge. Please stand.
Our most humble and gracious heavenly Father, tonight we come to you in prayer for the people that are in the path of Matthew, one of the largest hurricanes ever to hit the United States of America. We pray for all of those in its path, for Florida, for Georgia, for South Carolina, North Carolina, and for all of the people that are going to have their properties destroyed. We have heavy hearts, and anything, Lord, that you can do to help these people survive, we pray that you do that. We come here tonight as a group wanting to do what's right for Calqueshoe Parish and make the right decisions. I ask that you would bless each one that is here with us tonight and all of us here in Calqueshoe. In God's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andropont.
Here.
Berres.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Gidry.
Yeah, Ms. Catherine.
Mr. Gilery.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Vice President McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott is out of town this evening, unable to attend. Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
The President Langford.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Before we get started, we would ask that everyone please silence their cell phones, and if you wish to speak on any item that's on the agenda, that you fill out a blue slip you'll find there at the front of the room, and you can hand it to anyone here at the staff desk. Item four is a six o'clock action. We'll come back to that. Item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have, sorry, we have four new applications and 25 renewals, and that we recommend that they be approved.
Okay.
I'd like to speak on this before we vote, if you don't mind.
I was warned. You have the floor, Ms. Trimmie.
Can I ask you to list the ones?
Yeah, thank you. We need a motion to discuss. Got a motion and a second to discuss. Go ahead.
Thank you all. On the, on the putting alcohol in the Dollar Store, in the one that is going to be located in Ward Five on Highway 12, how could I, how can I handle that in a way where I don't know what my colleagues would do one way or the other? But this happens to be across the street, across Highway 12, from one of the largest Pentecostal churches in the Starks area. And I just feel like it's not an appropriate place. It's also very close to First Baptist Church, and then one block over is Stark's High School. And I just, I would just feel like that in that particular one, that I would like to ask how we would handle it if, if I could ask that that one be removed from the list. There's four or five?
Uh, yes.
There's four?
Four.
There's four. I would just like that one to be removed from the list. So I don't exactly know how I can go about that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Gabb on how you do that.
Well, Ms. Trimmie, the fact that we're at this stage, Dollar Generals and all the applicants have met all of the state and parish requirements, so it almost becomes a ministerial duty to approve the permits at this point. So if, however, if you did want to take action separate on that one, the proper motion would be to approve all of that one. But again, if we do that, the Dollar General stores would have a very good basis to seek to overturn whatever action the police jury did take.
At least I can try.
Well, it's, unfortunately, it's, they've met all the requirements. And the state ultimately preempts a lot of the requirements on alcohol permits, and even the parish permits. We took action back in 2013 to remove the prohibition for these types of locations or proximity to churches. So they've met our requirements as well, unfortunately. So the permit request to get to this stage, they've met all the requirements.
Well, I mean, it's, this hasn't been public, so the people that live there don't have no idea, you know, that this is happening. And I found out sort of like by accident, you know? So, and, you know, whether my jaws support me or don't, I would like to at least ask by making a motion to delete the one in Ward Five.
Well, I tell you what, if we can, if I can make a suggestion, maybe we can take action on all the others first.
Okay.
And maybe make a motion, entertain a motion to approve all of those, and then come back with a second motion to address the Dollar General application.
Okay, well, then I'll make the motion first to address all of them. Is that correct?
All of them except the Dollar General.
Yes.
So you're, and the motion is to accept?
The one in Starks.
And Ward Five.
Right.
It's in favor, correct, Ms. Trimmie?
I'm in favor of all.
All accept that one.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Trimmie, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, that motion carries. Now we're down to the one.
The two in Ward Five.
And we need a motion.
There's only one.
There's only one.
One.
There's only one. It's on Highway 12, and if you've been there, you know it's, it's downtown. I mean, it's... I think somebody's after him.
Somebody backing up.
Anyway, I'm not trying to be onerous or whatever the word is on this issue, but I just feel in my heart it's not the right thing to do in that, at that particular spot for that particular location where it's in contact, very close with the churches.
You want to give me another motion to discuss? All right, we have a motion and a second to discuss, so carry on, Ms. Trimmie.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm really getting out of hand.
We're just trying to make it, no, we just want to make it legal.
I'm getting out of hand over here. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste your time, or, you know, I've stated my, my feelings and my thoughts on it, and I just ask that you consider pulling the one in Ward Five. That would be my motion.
So you're motion to deny that one?
Yes.
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Latour.
Discussion.
And there's, we do have quite a bit of discussion. Mr. Gilery.
Sam, where do we stand in this for us getting sued?
Well, and that's, that is the, the issue. Having met all of the requirements for the issuance of the permit under state and parish requirements, they are entitled to the permit.
Okay.
So if it is denied, they can seek to overturn this, this action.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You wouldn't bet money that we would win, would you?
I would take the opposite.
No.
Mr. McMillan.
Just to clarify, if we overturn, if we vote with Sandy, that we would probably all like to do, then we would just be setting ourselves up for lawsuits, would you agree?
You would. If Dollar General pursued it, yes. And, and we would not have a very good basis to defend.
But the good part is, is we keep a lawyer on retainer.
And, and, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Trimmie.
Okay. This isn't in a mean spirited way. I'm not doing this in any way that is in a mean spirited way or that wants to set a precedent for, for our parish. In another life, in whatever year it was, we had a different ordinance. What year was that?
2013.
In 2013, where you would not have been able to do this. And the reason that it was changed at that time was there was something that was going to be put in next to the library in Moss Bluff. And there wasn't any opposition for that, but with the 300-foot issue, they couldn't put it there. So we changed our ordinance in order for that to be able to go in Moss Bluff, close to the library in Moss Bluff. So that's why it's, it's not working like it used to, is because we made that decision. And I just feel like that I'm just standing up for what I think in this case is, is best for that community. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane, if we would move to deny this license, is it similar to a zoning case? Would they have to wait another year to apply, or what would the process be?
I don't believe so.
So they could apply again tomorrow if we deny it tonight?
Well, I think, I think you need to listen to your, your attorney, because he...
Oh, I understand. I'm just trying to get some information out there in the open.
Well, I mean, they followed all the application requirements, and that's why we're here, is that they've done that.
Yeah.
And that's what we do as an office, is we accept the application.
I understand, but in the case that we would overturn this, is there, I mean, could they apply again tomorrow? And would it come before us, possibly within the next 30 days?
I would say that they could. There's nothing in the ordinance that says they can't.
Okay. And I'd like to ask if there's anyone here tonight representing Dollar General in the audience? Okay. Well...
Would you like to speak?
I mean, I'd like to offer him the opportunity to speak if he would, if he wants to. I didn't, you know, I didn't expect that even.
Okay.
But, and let me just say this, if there was perhaps a 30-day delay that we wanted to entertain, I might entertain that, but it would be very tough for me to vote to deny this license when they have accomplished everything that we asked them to accomplish. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Bear with us for one moment. Mr. Gidry, do you wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. President.
You have the floor.
But I would like to speak after I hear the gentleman first, though, if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Berres.
Thank you. Wes, Mr. Gabb, was there at any point in time, a period where this was open for discussion? This part right here was open for discussion, and what, anybody concerned could have voiced these concerns, and that's over, and so?
The ordinance?
Yeah.
The amendment to the ordinance? In 2013?
When that, no. This store, when they're, during their application process, was there a point in time where, you know, anybody that caught wind of this said, "Oh, wait, I want to say something against that"?
No, it's, it's part of the ordinance. I mean, they...
But during the application process?
Yeah, no, the applica, it's not a public hearing. So they're not seeking to get a variance or anything like that. It is, it is part of the ordinance, and they meet the ordinance. So they can come in and make that application. As long as they meet the application requirements and meet the ordinance, we can move them forward. There is no public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Berres. Sir, would you please state your, your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Mark Walters. I'm the district manager, or one of two district managers for Dollar General here in the Lake Charles and Sulphur area. I live at 1330 West McNeese Street, apartment number 5110, here in Lake Charles.
Okay. Mr. Gidry, you had questions, or would you, you just want to hear from him?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's definitely what I'm...
Go ahead, you have the floor. You've heard the discussion, whatever comments you care to make.
And, you know, what I would say on behalf of Dollar General One is, obviously, we seek to follow all of the various local and state ordinances and laws, and as already been stated, we follow those and, at this point, have had the application approved. Will totally admit that I am not completely up on all of our local ordinances and laws, but, you know, if it helps you all move it along to speak with Ms. Trimmie, and I hope that I'm pronouncing your name properly.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm a five-month Lake Charles resident, so happy to be here.
Welcome.
This is my first experience with all of you. We certainly could have further conversations about this one location. Now, I am not in any way, shape, or form empowered by my company to say, "Oh, we absolutely will back off of it." Obviously, we followed all of the legal requirements, but I can also understand and appreciate the concerns that you're having about this one particular location and its proximity to the churches and the high school. So that's something we could certainly, I can partner with people at my corporate offices in Nashville, and we can come back and have a conversation specifically with you, and then with the rest of the police jury. But again, from my perspective, as far as I know, from my role as the district manager and starting to operate the stores with this product, we again have followed and meet all of the requirements at this point, as I understand it.
I'm proud that you're here. I mean, go ahead.
So, just to try to cut to the chase here, would you not be opposed to like a 30-day deferral just on that one application?
I would say I would not be opposed to that, and I'm representing Dollar General. We want to do what's right for the community. And so if there are concerns that all of you have, and you would like further conversation with us and having a 30-day delay, I'm sorry, I missed the word that you used there, Mr. Landry.
Yeah, no, that's...
A referral, deferral. You know, if we want to do that and have some more conversations, I certainly would think that we would be open to that, because again, you know, we're, we are a big part of this community, and we want to be a good partner in the community. So if you all have questions, I think that we should be having further conversation on that.
Okay, that's very kind of you. So can we get a motion to defer?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer for 30 days.
For 30 days. I got a motion by Ms. Trimmie.
On that one.
Second by Mr. Latour. Are we okay, Mr. Gabb?
Sure.
Mr. Beam, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for a moment, it's more going back to Mr. Berres's question, which is a good question. It was in 2013, for, so for the newly elected officials, the, the difference here, and Ms. Trimmie alluded to it, the jury passed allowing this if it was over 50% sales in groceries or domestic, just regular stores. So Walmarts, Dollar Generals, and all that primary sales are not liquor, that's how it was allowed. So you couldn't, for example, if they were just a liquor store, you couldn't go there. And that, that was, if you're wondering what, what was the basis, that's why. And that, that's a, you know, that's an important difference. It probably doesn't change anything y'all are doing, I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Berres.
Thank you. Actually, I was just, you know, the timing, you know, it's like, was there a time to say something, and someone just missed it? That's really all I was getting at, you know? Yeah.
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? Mr. Gidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Ms. Sandy, I want to applaud you for standing up for that, because we've had issues like this before in the past, and we've always found a way to somehow deal with them. But I also want to say to you, sir, that you showed the character of what type of person you are by doing what you did tonight, because business is business, and money is money. But you made a decision right here before us to say to Ms. Trimmie that you would take the time to discuss it.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that shows, I mean, that's a good neighbor, that's a good business neighbor. And I tell you what, from this point on, you can guarantee any one of us up here will do what we can to help you for what you did.
Thank you.
And I applaud you for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any further discussion? And we had a motion and a second to defer for 30 days. Everybody clear on that? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. A motion to pay the bills. Got a motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September 1, 2016.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Andropont, and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item eight, consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated September 29, 2016. Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee met on September 29 and recommended approval of the following requests from the grant funding from the Gaming Fund. West Calqueshoe Airport, Southland Field, $4,000 for costs associated with purchase of a fuel truck. A City Refuge Veterans Homeless Shelter, $20,000 for a kitchen complex at the facility. Water Works District Number 11 of Wards Four and Seven, $20,000 for costs associated with repair of two water wells.
No.
D is no, no action necessary. Ward Four, District 13, Human Services Department, $7,000 for the Sulphur Housing Christmas Giving Program. Ward Four, District 14, City of Westlake, $15,000 for additional costs related to the extension of the city's water line on Westwood Road. Ward Four, District 15, Gravity Drainage District Number Five of Ward Four, $18,500 for costs associated with erosion control in Maplewood. Ward Five, Fire Protection District Number One, $45,000 for the costs associated with parking lot maintenance repairs and the purchase of firefighter equipment. Water Works District Number 14 of Ward Five, $40,000 for costs associated with, with water system improvements on Evangeline Road from First Street to Fourth Street. Town of Iowa, $6,650 for funding assistance toward the purchase of bulletproof vests for the Iowa Police Department. That is my report, Mr. President, and I ask for a second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brain to approve all items, and a second by Mr. Gilery. We do have a speaker on 8B, Kimberly Andropont. Would you please come up, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. I'm Kimberly Andropont from Sulphur, and I'm here on behalf of the City of Refuge and my very good friend Beth McGuire and myself. We are so appreciative of your gracious donation, and from the bottom of our hearts, we just want to say thank you. You've done an awesome thing for the homeless veterans in our community, and again, we are greatly appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we had a motion and a second on all bullets. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item nine, consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated September 29, 2016. Mr. Foren.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee met on September 29 to discuss the following items. Item A, presented a certificate to Ms. Samantha Espinoza, third grade student of Immaculate Conception Cathedral School, for winning the litter bag drawing contest for the Keep Calqueshoe Clean, Don't Litter campaign. Item B, received report from Mr. Todd Landry with Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development regarding the I-210 Bridge Repair Project. Item C, received report from Ms. Patricia Prudhomme of McNeese State University regarding the 2016-2017 Banner Cultural Series. Item D, recommended approval of the 2017 Road and Drainage Trust Fund Grants. City of Lake Charles received $500,000 for Lake Street four-laning. Gravity Drainage District Number Four of Ward Three received $500,000 for laterals L3, L5 of W6. Gravity Drainage District Number Seven of Ward Eight received $500,000 for the L14 main improvements. Item E, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury and the City of Lake Charles for establishing the responsibilities related to the Gochet Road, Lake Charles Regional Airport Sewer Transport System project. Item F, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an active sale agreement for the Tank Forum Road Site Distance Project. Item G, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving a utility servitude agreement for the Coach Williams Drive Extension Project. Item H, recommended that a resolution be adopted approving expropriation of property for the Coach Williams Drive Expansion Project. Item I, recommended that a resolution be adopted accepting Calqueshoe Parish Project Number 2016-05 striping of various roads in Calqueshoe Parish as substantially complete. That concludes the report, and I'll make a motion that all these be adopted, all bullets.
Thank you, Mr. Foren. Had a motion by Mr. Foren, and a second by Ms. Mayo, that all items be adopted. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. I think it was Ms. Trimmie.
It was Trimmie.
Yeah, it was. I thought it was until he said that it wasn't.
It was a lady.
Okay. We got that down. You're lucky that Elizabeth wasn't here, and you made a mistake like that.
Yeah, you're lucky Elizabeth wasn't here.
Item 10, consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated September 29, 2016.
Move on to 10.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, second by Mr. Gidry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 11, the staff request that the following item be approved, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of property in full-fee ownership from Wilton Joseph Redd, God's Property Subdivision, for the water plant expansion project located on Desertail Road in Ward Three, and further authorizing the president of the police jury or his designate, when appropriate, to execute all documents related thereto. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, and a second by Mr. Latour. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 12.
Move to overturn planning and zoning.
Take appropriate action on a request by Dalton Langford to rezone from agriculture to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park of 14 spaces at 4007 and 4009B of South Begless Parkway in Ward Four. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, September 20, 2016, and voted five, four, and three against to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Foren to overturn, and a second by Mr. Latour. And do we have speakers on this item, Mr. McMillan?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We only have two minutes left, so we, I'm sure, are not going to get through in two minutes. Mr. Langford, are you going to speak on behalf of your project?
Sure.
If you could, come on up. I'm sure I will have to interrupt you. How many minutes do we have, Mr. Gabb? Are we going to allow Mr. Langford?
Well, we've got a few minutes for the public hearing, but we've, usually 10 minutes is allowed.
10 minutes, all right. 10 minutes or less?
Okay, thank you, sir. My name is Dalton Langford, 806 Enton Wood Forest Boulevard, Sulphur, Louisiana.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor.
I have, I have built an RV park in that area, and the land adjoining what I'm trying to rezone is adjacent to land that's already been zoned RV park. I have hauled in about 80,000 yards of dirt on my first park, and 50,000 yards of dirt on the second phase. And I've had a drainage impact study. I think they stated this on file with the parish, that the parks affected less than one-half or 1% of the drainage area in that place. I've got all the necessary permits. I have mobile homes across the street, mobile homes adjoining my property, and I intend to build a first-class RV park on that, similar to the one I have right now. I have all, all my spaces rented. I have approximately 230 RV spaces and 78 mobile home spaces, and they're all full. There's a, I had some little park model cabins on there, and they didn't meet the state requirements, nor the parish requirements, and they had to be moved off. Less than a month, I had those spaces all filled up again. When, when those mobile homes were forced to be moved off, they were all rented. All the tenants had to be displaced and put motels and various other housing. But there's a great demand for temporary housing in this area, and I build a first-class proposition, and I try to do the best I can not to affect my neighbors. Thank you all very much, and I appreciate you all's consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Langford. All right, it is now six o'clock. We will have to come back to item 12 after we, I guess, was that item one or two? Item four. Okay, item four, hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM. As a result of notice provided to the owners of the properties described below, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Mr. Robinson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Our first structure is at 6436 Nicky Drive. This is in the La Blue Settlement area. There's one manufactured home and one accessory building. The owner is Tinco LLC. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Is there any pictures or anything of it?
We did send some pictures. I don't know.
They're attached. Should be attached. You have to go to the little tab on your.
Yeah. I might have to say. It's not doing.
We're having tech. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on it, or?
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss, a second. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Hunter to discuss and a second by Mr. Latour. So are we going to have pictures or are we not?
No, he said it's not working.
So we're, we may not.
I got them.
Somebody has them. If JP is in the building, we could have him come and assist Mr. Latour. Possibly. Here we go. Okay, while we're waiting on that, is there anyone in the audience here to speak on item A sixty-four thirty-six Nicky Drive in LeBlu Settlement? Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item A sixty-four three-six Nicky Drive in LeBlu Settlement? All right, seeing no one, Mr. Latour, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to condemn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to condemn by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
The twenty-eight fifty-two Lafranc Road structure is down, so there'll be no further action.
No action necessary on B.
C is three twenty-one Dalton Road. This is in the Westlake area. It's one manufactured home. The owner is a Limsey LLC. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. McMillan to condemn and remove within thirty days and a second by Mr. Guidry. We'll have some discussion. Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Limsey LLC, it seems like I've heard their name before. Do they, have they come before us because of the same issue before, or was that something else?
They're a company out of the Lafayette area that buys a lot of these properties at the tax sale.
Tax sales, oh, okay.
So that's, that's.
That's what it is then. All right, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item C three twenty-one Dalton Road in Westlake? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak on item C three twenty-one Dalton Road in Westlake? Okay, seeing none, we had a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Guidry. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
The last one on the agenda tonight is sixteen eighteen Unis Street. This is in the Sulphur area. It's one house. The owner is a Kenneth Paul Lines Edox. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Andropont, second by Mr. Guidry. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item D sixteen eighteen Unis Street in Sulphur? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak on item D sixteen eighteen Unis Street in Sulphur? No one wants. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Now we're going back to item twelve. Does any of the jurors have any questions for Mr. Langford? Not at this time?
They're not for Mr. Langford. I've got some, some pictures. If Tom could put those up on the, on the screen from this site. In the meantime, Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir.
This, this site is, had a lot of work done on it. Is there any permits that have been pulled for this site or would have been required for this site to do drainage work, retaining wall work, landfill? What were the steps that should have been followed in order to proceed to the point that he's at today?
Well, it is, it is in a designated stormwater area, and so a stormwater permit would be required for that, and, and what that is, that's the, that's where they put their BMPs, their best management practices, such as silt fencing and hay bales to keep the silt out of the ditches. It's also in a special flood hazard area as designated by FEMA, and so by placing fill material in the special flood hazard area does require a submittal for drainage impact or fill mitigation, and so we have not received that yet.
And none of this is on, on file with the parish, and as he stated, he called in fifty thousand yards of dirt on a site that's going to hold fourteen camper trailers. And if, if we can get the pictures up on the screen, I don't know if he's having technical difficulty. I went out there and took some photos from, on top of this pad that, that has effectively made the neighbor's fence a two-foot fence, because the pad is built up roughly four foot above grade on the surrounding area. Advance, advance to the next one. That's one more, one more, right there. We'll back up. That's what the site looks like from the side. I'm standing up. I'm not a real tall person, but looking across, you can barely see the car on the other side of the dirt. Advance one more. This is a, a piece of drainage pipe that he has put in to try and mitigate, and I think arbitrarily sized. I don't think there was any, anything that drove him to the twelve-inch culvert that's there. Go one more. And that's the other side of it that's poking out at the neighbor's fence, and roughly about a four-foot dike wall has been built across where the natural flow of water is always gone. Go one more. Now I'm standing on top of the dirt hill at this point, and that's what you see. You see right down into the neighbor's backyard and, which makes no privacy whatsoever. One more. That's the erosion that's taking place that's going back towards the, the property owner that lives behind there, that, that the water used to flow away from his property, now it flows onto his property. Go one more. And that, and that's the view into his backyard from on top of this hill where all these campers are going to be. And this, this is, it's not contiguous to his other trailer park. There's a gap of property in between them that's quite substantial. I think it's possibly still zoned agricultural or commercial.
C, C one.
C one. So he, there's been a lot of damage to his neighbors. Maybe not intentionally, but through maybe whatever the reason, the damage has been caused to the neighbors. And he had to put in another drainage pipe across his property to, to mitigate the, the damage that it was caused to the, to the other adjacent neighbor. Now he's, he's preemptively putting a drainage pipe in on this one because he's trying to do the right thing, I think. The cart's like a mile ahead of the horse at this point, and, and this is just not good development, where three sides of this property is infringing on, on the neighbor's rights. It's, it's just not a good place for this whatsoever. He has, we just expanded his park in the back by, I think it was a hundred and sixty-eight spaces, and there's been nothing done with that location at all. Still sits just like it does, did that night. It sits the same way today. And to go through all of this for fourteen camper spots is, in my mind, ridiculous, that what the neighbors are going to have to incur because of a fourteen-site camper trailer place. On the same token, he's presently got a, something with planning and zoning to convert every one of his sites, including this site, was positioned for a variance to reduce the lot size requirements for a mobile home from five thousand square feet down to two thousand square feet, so that they can place mobile homes on all these instead of campers. He doesn't really want to have a camper park. He wants to have a tightly fit mobile home park, and, and I think it's just eroding the quality of, of what our ordinances were written for, and it's not just one site, it's all sites that he owns. So I respectfully ask that you guys help me overturn this and, and protect these neighbors. I know we're going to hear from several of them here in just a few minutes, and that's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane, can you comment a little bit more on some of what Mr. Foreman said as far as the dirt that was brought onto the property? I mean, were there certain steps that were supposed to be taken before that happened? I'd really like to have a better explanation of that.
Prior to placing any fill on, on a site that's either in a special flood hazard area or in the stormwater area, it does require permit to make sure, a plan is submitted to make sure that they're meeting those requirements before we issue anything. So at this point in time, we do not have that.
Have, has there been any action taken by anyone?
The, the next action is to cite him for not having those requirements, and there are penalties for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Gilery.
Wes, if it was to pass, what would be the stipulations on making him clean up all of this, the drainage and everything?
Well, he's going to have to submit, you know, drainage plans to us, and then engineering will have to review those plans to make sure they meet all the requirements under our drainage ordinance. And so at this point in time, we're not sure what he will have to do to that site.
Thanks, Mr. Wes. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Mr. White.
I've had the same question as Mr. Gilery had. When I was first called about this, I, myself and another police juror, we actually went out and looked at this property as well and took pictures, pretty much the same pictures that Mr. Foreman's got on the screen. Myself, if I was a neighbor that was there, I, I would be very angry with the situation as well. I don't understand to have a six-foot fence, to have this amount of dirt, to where now the person that has a six-foot fence has a two-foot fence, and honestly, that's what they have. They won't even have a two-foot fence once you put a camper trailer in there when they come in. It's, their, their privacy's gone. Even an eight-foot fence there wouldn't do them any justice, what, what's going on right now. So I, I agree, something needs to be done, and this, and this wasn't the right way to do a development. I've supported in the past, but as this development, I, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any discussion from the jurors at this time? Mr. Bears.
Thank you, Mr., well, the, the fact that, that this is just being done backwards, if we let this go, we look like a bunch of fools. I mean, how did it get to this point? If I was those neighbors, I'd be mad, but now that I know that he's just wanting to ask forgiveness instead of permission, I, I'd, I'd be fighting mad. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Bears, any further discussion from the jurors at this time? Mr. Andropont.
I reserve the right after the residence around here to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Andropont. Okay, first, we're going to hear from Mr. Darrell Wilburn. Diana Johnson is going to speak on your behalf. Is that what you said, sir?
I asked you to speak first.
Okay, yeah, please speak at the microphone.
Mr. President, how many speakers do we have?
Three. Two minutes apiece. How long did he speak?
Well, why don't we have three minutes each is probably appropriate.
Three minutes each. Okay, Ms. Johnson, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Diana Johnson. I live at four oh oh eight North Oak Lane, Sulphur, Louisiana. It's my property, my husband has property that adjoins this, what he's proposing. I do have pictures which are similar to what Mr. Foreman has of my home and my neighbor's home, where they, you stand on top of this, this mound of dirt, and you're looking in my backyard. This is not the first time this has happened to us. When he started the first one, he had dirt over, that went over the top of our fence, that stayed for over a year. We had drainage problems with it, that the water, it would rain, the water would go in our backyard. For weeks, we couldn't mow our grass because of this. Mr., we talked to Mr. Langford about it. Mr. Langford, eventually, we did get, he did put in a pipe, and our property is draining now. And I've got, truthfully, I've got concerns about what's going to happen next with this. Our property value, we've got mobile home park and an RV park to the east of us. I've got a mobile home park northwest of it. There's a proposed mobile home park to the south of the street we're living on. Now he's wanting to put this, whatever, I'm not even sure what he's wanting to put back there, but it seemed to be in my backyard. It's going to be above my fence line, where people's going to be looking in my yard. I've got grandkids. My neighbor has small children. Nothing has been discussed with us about this, and I think we deserve that much. Got written down, I'm asking, I mean, his people are going to be coming in and out in this, in this, what he's proposing. Is there going to be a background check on these people? Are we going to be safe? There's going to be a lot of people coming in and out of that area. Are we going to be safe? It's the noise control. Our depreciation on our value, the value of our homes has gone down because of all this. I can't sell my property for what it's valued at because of all of this. My neighbors can't. I mean, it's at the point, he's choking us. And I'm just asking, if he wants to put in some sort of business there, he's a businessman. I understand he needs to make money at what cost.
Ms. Johnson, your three minutes are up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Johnson by the jurors? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Darrell Wilburn.
Sir, I'd like to pass again to allow assistance to speak. I live in the neighborhood behind it.
Okay, sir, you can't speak from the audience. People don't, they don't know what you're saying. Gary, are you planning on speaking at all?
Yeah, I'm going to speak now, since I walked in here.
Okay.
Darrell Wilburn, seven six three Deer Lane, Sulphur, Louisiana. I own a home by Ms. Diane Johnson across the street from her, and she's right, he's built all around us. This development only affects about twelve people, and it's going to continue to lower our property values. He said earlier, he's got three hundred homes already in our neighborhood, and I basically just want to say, please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn. Mr. Andropont.
You live there?
No, sir.
It's a rent house?
It's a rent house.
So you don't live there?
No, sir.
How far, how far from that area do you live?
Four miles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Andropont. Any further, any questions for Mr. Wilburn? Thank you, Mr. Wilburn. And now we have Selena Wilburn. Ms. Wilburn, if you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Selena Wilburn, and I'm located at forty twenty South Begless Parkway. I'm here representing myself and my neighbors and ask y'all to please deny Mr. Dalton Langford's request to rezone this property. He's almost already totally surrounded what was a nice, clean, family neighborhood with his developments. We realize that Mr. Langford is a businessman, and he bought this property in order to extend his business, but we'd like to enjoy the sanctity of our home. but we'd like to enjoy the sanctity of our homes. This neighborhood's where we live and where we're raising our families, and we know that from past experience, that Mr. Dalton's not a man of integrity, and we can't trust his word.
And ma'am, you cannot speak, just only speak on the issue. We don't talk about people.
On August 16th, Mr. Langford was proved for an RV park on the piece of property just to the north of the property in question here today. He promised the police juror members in this very room that he would adhere to the site plan that he had filed. This plan included the six-foot fence that Mr. Fornum brought up. A six-foot fence was put up, but then he put up the four feet of dirt, and this is the rickety six-foot fence, which is now just a two-foot barrier, as y'all mentioned. To use his words, he was gonna build a first-class park. He promised it that it wouldn't be an eyesore. He promised landscaping, pond, security, lighting. He promised there'd be a playground. Nothing of the sort has been implemented on that property. It was all broken promises to all of you and to all of us. On top of that, he moved manufactured homes, as he said, that weren't up to code, and he had to move them off, kick off his tenants, and then he did move in the RV spots. He has, I know, over 275 RV spots, home spots, cabins on all of his properties. But with all the money that he's taking in, he's not doing anything to prove any of the properties. All he's doing is degrading our homes. This is the property in question right now. This is in front of my house, directly in front of my house. And I have to ask you, would you want this in your front yard? And my neighbors and I, we question our safety on a daily basis now, and I kid you not, this very morning, 3:00 this morning, I walked out of my house, and there were two characters in my driveway, almost up in my carport, at 3:00 a.m. this morning. We have this kind of traffic now all the time. This is not the first time we've had it there. My neighbors and I were not opposed to see 123 development, industrial, but please don't allow another trailer park, another RV park. We ask you to deny this respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilburn. All right, is there any questions from the jurors from Ms. Wilburn?
These are the homes that we do have.
Would you like to speak now, Mr. Andropov, or would you like after? After Mr. Langford's rebuttal?
Yes.
Okay. We'll save you for then. Mr. Langford, if you would, you have a three-minute rebuttal time.
I have been building mobile home parks and RV parks in that area for almost 20-something years. And every time it comes up, I get objections from these people. I have built a very nice RV park. I was approached by Jimmy Vickers screaming at me on the phone to build a fence. I promised to build a fence to separate that area. I said, "Okay, Mr. Vickers, I'll build a fence." I built a fence, and by the time I finished hauling dirt in there, it was two-foot, about a two-foot fence. Then Les comes to me and say, "Dalton," he said, "you need to raise that fence." I said, "In the end, I paid for the material, took the old fence down, and did raise it up. I will fence in whatever needs to be fenced in to separate my project from their houses after I finish filling the dirt in. If y'all want me to build a fence now, it wouldn't be a good idea." The area to the south of, I believe, is heavy industrial, across Ravier Road. I didn't hear one peep out of those folks when you can go build a plant across the street. I intend to do the right thing. I have put drains, I run a 16-inch culvert approximately 600 feet to drain Ms. Johnson's property, and it drains fine. I've hauled dirt in on her property, got equipment on her property, and spread the dirt for her. When the hurricane come, I got a tri-coat in there, picked up the trees and hauled them off of her property. Didn't cost them a penny. I like to get along with my neighbors, and I will build a fence, and I will build a first-class operation. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. I got it. Okay. Is, Mr. Fornum?
I'd like to bring Ms. Johnson back up and ask her a question.
Okay.
Can I have a rebuttal on this?
No, ma'am, you may not.
I can ask you a specific question.
All right.
At what point did he drain your yard? Was there?
He drained my yard after I contacted an attorney and threatened to sue him.
That's my understanding. There was a threat of a lawsuit that actually prompted the pipe to be installed. There was a couple of other feeble attempts at digging some ditches out, some little swells out to the road.
I mean, I have a copy with me of the letter he was sent.
But after all of those other ineffective attempts were attempted, then a lawsuit was filed, or the threat of it was put out there, and that's when the pipe was installed, is my understanding.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, just so you'll know, the other side, your side, doesn't have a rebuttal, so that's just the policy, so. Right, I understand, but I just wanted to let you know we weren't picking on you. That's just the procedure. Okay, Mr. Gilry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see anywhere what staff recommends. What did staff recommend?
I recommended for.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gilry. Okay. Is there any other speakers besides Mr. Andropov? Mr. Fornum?
After Mr. Andropov.
Mr. Andropov has asked to be last, and I granted his wish, so if you have something else to say, please say it now.
All right. I've been involved in this trailer park episode. These folks had a very nice neighborhood there, and back in 2006 or '07 is when the jury granted the addition to the park over on the northwest corner of that area. And slowly, an effort is being made to totally engulf that subdivision within a trailer park. And fundamentally, that is just not fair to these property owners over there. It was, the whole park was basically to the east of that subdivision, and it existed there, and they coexisted for many years. And now, it's slowly working its way completely around their subdivision so that there'll be an island inside of a trailer park. And it's just not the right thing to do. These 14 spots are not gonna make any impact on any housing in this parish. The attempt is, is to eventually get 28 mobile homes is what his real intent is. Really doesn't want a RV park. He wants a chopped-down version of a mobile home park, is what he's applied for, and that's not gonna impact our housing needs in this parish whatsoever. But it will impact these people's lives immensely forever and ever and ever. And it's just not the right thing to do, and sometimes the right thing to do is very, very clear, and I don't know if I can say anymore to help these folks out, but they are in desperate need of some help tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fornum. Mr. Andropov.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, obviously, Mr. Langford is being portrayed as a villain. I don't perceive him to be that way. Want to compare apples with apples, if I could, Mr. President, if you would?
You have the floor, Mr. Andropov.
Give me some latitude here. A few weeks ago, Mr. Collins had an issue by where people wanted to rezone the old golf course north of I-10 to put a subdivision. The rezoning was denied, and justifiably so, in light of the fact that there was only one ingress and one egress. As I appreciate it, correct me, Mr. Collins, if I'm wrong, but they wanted to put approximately 200 homes. Am I correct? Okay. We're talking 200 homes as opposed to 14 trailer spots. Quite an indifference. Let's be realistic about the issue. Is Dalton perfect? No. Has he made some mistakes? He's admitted he has. Staff agreed to go along with his request. The zoning board voted 5 to 3 to support the request. I don't know if you've been out there. Some of you say you have. What's not been said is, is about 15 to 20 feet different between where the dirt starts and the property lines of these other people. Why the dirt was moved in, people, I don't know that. Obviously, there's a reason for the dirt to have been moved in. This entire area is commercial and industrial. As opposed to Mr. Collins' project, you have Ravier Road and you have Begless Parkway for ingress and egress for the area. There are approximately 200 units in that mobile home as we speak here tonight. If you can justify to me that 14 new spaces will make a big difference and an impact in that area, speak up now, because I just don't think that it does. We're talking 14 spaces is what we're talking about, as opposed to 200 that are already there. I respect the wishes of the people over there, but it gotta be realistic. We have mobile home parks and RV parks that are rapidly filling up as we speak here today. Every one of them are just about reached capacity, and we're gonna quiver over 14 spaces in an area that's been zoned properly for the request. I don't know what else to tell you. Common sense has got to prevail somewhere. It really does. Are we greater than the zoning board and staff? I don't think so. Before you vote, give it a second thought. With that, Mr. President, I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Andropov. Even though I asked everyone if they had a question and no one responded, now Mr. McMillan has a question.
I'd like to speak to Mr. Langford, if you would mind coming to the mic. Dalton, I know that we need trailer parks in this area, and I know that these 14 would help you in income-wise and stuff like this. Let's talk about the dirt just a second. That's kinda hanging with me, and you're building that dirt up without getting permits. Give me a little more clarity on that.
Well, this parish makes ordinances unbeknownst to us. I just told y'all I hauled thousands of loads of dirt in and didn't break any laws. Since then, the ordinance has passed that I didn't know nothing about. Or I'd have went down there and talked to parish planning and got a permit for that. I will get a drainage impact.
My next question is, with the drainage, we're gonna have to do a drainage impact study where I asked Wes before this, and when our staff does recommend something, it means something to me, as well as what the zoning board does. So, I asked Wes that, you know, what are we gonna have to do as far as the drainage? I'm very concerned, not only with a higher fence to help, but the drainage on these neighbors. You can't run water off this high hill into their backyards, and you understand that?
Yes.
And I think that that's something we've gotta be paramount in making sure that doesn't happen.
Well, I've kept the dirt back from their property a certain amount. I'm in the process of putting 2-by-12 fencing around the area to keep the silt from running off onto their property. I have dug ditches to drain around the east side, the south side, and I've run a culvert down the north side. The water drains, and Les has been out there, and we've discussed it. The water comes off back there and runs on a natural drain, and that's why I install my culvert, so the water will run into my culvert. The neighbor directly behind me has dug a ditch from his front yard to the back, and my drainage people said that he is draining water out of your ditch onto his property. He should not have ever put that ditch there, but that's his business. But I provided drainage for that guy.
That's some of the questions I had. I just wanna say to both sides, these are the toughest decisions we have to make, because I can see Dalton's side, I can see your side, but I gotta go with my gut feeling when it comes down to it. But that's what we're doing here today.
Well, I apologize for not getting a permit, because I didn't know I had to have one. I've hauled thousands of dirt in there with no problem. Now I find out I have to have a permit. I will do whatever is requested of me.
You also said you would build a larger fence if you need to.
Yes, sir. I would build a fence. When I get my dirt up, I don't wanna build a fence right now, because it'd be like the first time I had it. It would end up to be a two-foot fence.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McMillan, and maybe I shouldn't, but I just, for clarification, is it possible that if this passes and he comes to y'all, that y'all could make him remove all that dirt? I mean, he'll do this drainage study and all those other things he has to do. I mean, is that a possibility?
There could be some requirement for doing that, yes.
Just, thank you. You wanna be last again?
Not necessarily.
Mr. Andropov, you have the floor.
On behalf of Dalton's part, and Wes will attest to this, I have been in Wes's office numerous times with Dalton when he had concerns and issues about what to do and what not to do, and I think Wes will tell you that's a fact. So, to say that Dalton didn't know about the permit, I have to agree with him, because I think if he would have known, I know if he would have known, he would have gotten the permit, because he's been in your office too many times with me to discuss issues, and you've told him no on several occasions, and he didn't do, right?
He has been in my office.
Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane, how long has the ordinance been on the books that would require a permit for the amount of dirt that was brought onto that property?
Well, again, the ordinance, under the drainage ordinance, it requires if you place fill in the special flood hazard area, you're required to submit a drainage impact.
Before you take any action?
Correct. It's really, it's not really a permit, per se.
How long has that, I mean, how long has that been in our ordinance book?
I don't know, 10, that's, yeah, about 10 years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Fornum?
Thank you. That was one of the questions I had. And, you know, the property to the east of this location, there's four sites to the east of him, four properties, and over that, all of that property used to flow right across this property off to the ditch on Begless Parkway, and it was a natural flow of drainage. And now, there's just a big giant wall that he's self-inflicted or imposed a 12-inch pipe to take care of all that. And without doing a drainage impact analysis or any kind of requirements, I was out there the other day and talked with one of his gentlemen that works for him and told him, said, you know, that's probably not adequate. It's probably not what the impact analysis is gonna do. And the next day, I go back, and they're continuing on with the pipe. And the silt fence was put up, I think probably in good measure of what he thought needed to be done, but all the runoff is just running around the ends of the silt fence, and Begless Parkway ditch is full of silt now. State rarely goes out and digs the ditches out. So, now Begless Parkway's blocked. So now Begless Parkway is blocked off. Um, the gentleman behind him has a considerable amount of his dirt in his backyard now. I don't know if that's a, a plus or a negative. And he probably dug that ditch because he's blocked off and, uh, trying to get the water out of his backyard as best he can. And, uh, and this is, this goes on and on and on. The fence that was in question, uh, before was supposed to be a nice fence. At one point, he even told the residents that he was going to put brick columns and a real nice first-class fence. And you all saw what a first-class fence in his mind consists of. It's a rusty metal fence that's fallen down a couple of times and on the backside has cribbing to keep it upright. And, uh, so this is, this is what they've had to deal with over these last several years, is him telling them one thing and getting something completely different. And, uh, so that's why I really ask for your support tonight on getting this turned down because there's 100 spaces in that back end of that park that he has not even attempted to develop since we passed it several months ago. And, uh, again, these, these 14 spaces are not going to impact his business whatsoever. And, uh, but it will impact these people's lives for the rest of their life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Called a question.
Second.
Question's been called. Okay, we have a, a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Latour, and the motion was to overturn planning and zoning, which would mean to deny. Is that correct, Ms. Kathy?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I guess I paid attention.
Yes, vote yes.
Okay. Want more explanation? Okay. If, if you vote yes to, to the motion?
Yeah.
Then it would be to overturn, which would mean to deny. Your request. Everybody's clear? All right, Ms. Kathy, let's do a roll call.
Yes, sir, we'll start with the ayes this time. Mr. Andropant?
No. Yes.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
No.
Mr. Gilery?
No.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Trimming?
No.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Seven ayes, six nays, the motion carried, so the, uh, request was, was denied.
You need another? Now we need another motion?
No, we're good.
No.
No, we're good. Okay.
The zoning request was denied.
What was the vote again, Ms. Kathy?
Uh, there were seven ayes and six nays. Seven to six, it carried, the motion carried.
Motion carries. So it's to overturn, therefore it's denied. You, you miscounted tonight, Kathy. Never doubt, Kathy, you know she's right.
That's why I didn't.
Okay, so, uh, it's been overturned and, and, uh, the request has been denied. We'll go to item, uh, 30. Maybe, we'll, we'll do a five-minute recess. Give the, time for the room to clear.